Let this meeting come to order in order to discuss issues of concern and to prepare for its future agendas. The Morgantown City Council meets as a committee of the whole on the final Tuesday of each month. We do so this evening of November 28, 2017. No formal action may be taken in a committee of the whole meeting, and yet according to council's guidelines or general procedures, issues may not be introduced by council members in regular meetings without first being discussed at a committee of the whole. Citizen input is welcome in the public session of this meeting. There will be no opportunity for public discussion of issues as the meeting proceeds. We begin tonight with presentations, and that first presentation on our agenda is from the Morgantown Convention and Visitors Bureau. Please welcome Susan Biddle.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity of being able to meet with you this evening. As Paul knows, when I come, I can talk about tourism all day long, so I was given a short leash, very short leash. So I have prepared for everyone a packet. It has a lot of information in it. I'll just list it as a disclaimer up front. If there's anything whatsoever that you would like to talk to me about, my business card is in there. Email, text, phone call, whatever, I'd be happy to meet with anyone and elaborate on any of the information. I do these meetings on a regular basis. Unfortunately, the Morgantown meeting was the last one in my series, this trip or this tour that I've been doing. So it has on here September and October, so this is actually a little bit late, but I share the same information with all the municipalities. So I'll kind of just go real quickly through this. So there's several new members here that hasn't seen some of my basic general information on the Greater Morgantown CVB. Real quickly, we're very blessed to represent multiple areas within our region. We represent Montague and Preston County and several, all the municipalities within those two counties. As such, working together, we're able to do things that none of us could do individually by ourselves. So without getting into any more detail than that, I'm just going to go over the things that I've presented this go-around, and I would love to sit down with anyone. There is a trifold in the front of that packet. It's a small one. It gives you a general overview of what the CVB, looks like this, what the CVB does, just kind of in a real short synopsis. And then the folder, the bag itself contains several other pieces of information and paraphernalia that we have on our region and attractions and activities and things that we have available. Paperclip to my business card is the Municipal Tourism Partner Talking Points that I've done this session. The road bond, I try and get out and explain to everyone so that everyone has the ability to understand some of the things that we deal with on a regional basis as it relates to tourism. And there are several things that involve tourism on a municipal level. For example, we're very thankful that the state road bond passed because roads are constantly an issue as it relates to attracting visitors to our area, as well as reliable regional air service. That's another common thing that comes up. The second thing that's on the talking points is the Goodwill City Ambassador Program. This year, we were fortunate enough to be able to support the Goodwill City Ambassador Program. A real brief history, it was originally a program about five years ago that was started by some individual private citizens between the city of Morgantown and also WVU. Over those years, the program has kind of evolved, and essentially what they do, the result of it was after some inappropriate or rude treatment of some visiting fans, this program started to welcome incoming guests and visitors from the away visiting teams. So they set up station around WVU Stadium over at the Coliseum to welcome individuals. They reach out, they contact the incoming teams. Long story short version, at the beginning of this year, they came to us and asked us to help them with their program because they didn't have the funding that they had in the past. So what we did is we embraced their program, and they have a very modest budget. It's all volunteers. There's about 30 to 40 people that run the program. They've actually gotten a lot of national coverage from the success from their program. You can see letters to the editor in the newspaper periodically. Anyway, what I've done is I've asked all the municipalities in Mon County to join with the Greater Morgantown CVB in supporting their program. The second page of the paperclip section is a letter actually requesting $1,000 from every municipality within the region. So that is in the packet. So far, I've had, I've received support from almost every municipality that's been requested. I'm still waiting on a few, but everybody's seen this as a worthy project and has matched our efforts to support the program. Hopefully next year, we're just going to build into our budget, but it came to us very, very late this year, so it was just an opportunity for us to get out and work with our tourism partners. Our 2017 results, one of the responsibilities we have is to report to our municipal partners as far as what we're doing and how effective it is. And I think the third page that's paperclipped together, there's actually a summary sheet. It's called the, it's titled "West Virginia Governor's Conference on Tourism Awards: Overall Marketing Campaign." What I did is I gave you a summary, a copy of what we actually presented to the governor's conference, and it's an overall summary of what we do. Our goal this year, as it should be in any year actually, is to increase overnight stays by one night, an additional night, and to increase local spend while of those newcomers, those visitors that come to our area, over what they normally spend by staying an extra night. We do that through a very multi-leveled campaign, marketing campaign, print, digital, in-kind, paid advertising, it's a number of different things, social media, and there's a summary. It says campaign, this year's campaign was titled GOMO, and it gives you all the specifics. I won't get into that because it's a lot of detail. But the results are essentially summarized at the bottom. From the first seven months of 2000, I should say, sorry, 12 months from July 2016 through June 2017, we have more than doubled our organic traffic from our search engines year over year, which is a really big deal. And we've done a lot, there's specific visits to our four persona landing pages. We know who our audiences are, and we act, we're fisher people. What we do is we, we know who our target is, we know what fish we want to catch. We actually throw a line in based on what advertising or engagement we do, and then we reel them in, and we're trying to get them to come here and spend more money, and it's working. Through October reports, we use a STAR report. It's an industry standardized report that I get on a weekly basis, but through the end of October, so far 2017 compared to 2016, we have booked an additional 40,000 room a nights year over year, which amounts to $3.2 million in additional room revenue year over year. And if all of that additional room revenue actually generated lodging tax, it would be an additional $194,000 in lodging tax to our region. So it's working, and we will continue to watch this, and we adjust and monitor our reports and change what we're doing to make sure that it is the most effective use of our collective funds as there can be. We started a tourism ambassador program, kind of copycatting off of the Goodwill City ambassadors, and Mayor Kueke over there has his button on proudly wearing. Essentially, we know, once we get people here, they love it. They like to come back. They enjoy the people, they enjoy the community. The challenge is getting people here. And so when we get them here, we want everyone to know how hospitable we are. So we've started this tourism ambassador program where we're just going out and trying to get everyone to engage with our guests and welcome them to our area, just like we do our friends and neighbors every day. And it's been quite successful so far. Our lodging tax ordinances, there's been a real, although Morgantown doesn't seem to have this problem at this stage of the game, there's been a real problem, and I'm sure you've all read in the newspapers or heard in the news, a challenge with lodging tax collections and consistent enforcement. And without getting into a lot of detail, I've been asked from several of the municipalities, one of the challenges we have is not everybody follows the same ordinances, and we're trying to develop kind of like best practices, kind of like the gold standard of how we should be doing this consistently throughout our region. My challenge is, when I'm working with the 27 different properties that we have in the region, they all follow different rules because everybody's got a different ordinance. So what we've been asked to do, and I hope this will be acceptable as well eventually to the city of Morgantown, and you would welcome this, I'm going to try and get a, take the best of all the ordinances together and actually go ahead and try and come up with best practices throughout all the ordinances, and then come back to all the municipalities and ask them to adopt a common ordinance that everybody could follow and implementing the best practices throughout. Because unfortunately, the state, even the state code has a lot to be desired. So, you know, if we could do that, I will attempt, I haven't started it at all. I wanted to wait until I got in front of all the municipalities first, and I'd be more than happy to, like I said, discuss it with any council member that has any questions whatsoever, or if you have any specific suggestions or requests, I'd be happy to hear that and incorporate everything that I can. But the standard is, you know, Morgantown tends to be a leader in the state in many regards, and we'd like this to be another one of those ways that we could do this. So hopefully, you all will be receptive to that, and I'm going to start working on it after the first of the year and try and get everyone onto the, kind of the, following the same, the same set of guidelines, which would be fabulous. Make us higher in efficient use of the resources that we are responsible for, which would be great. We also started this, this year, most recently, this is a program that's not in your packet. It's called Mountaineer Deals. This is something, we used to go ahead and in all of our publications in your packet, you'll have a visitor's guide. Just about every publication had advertising as part of it that people, that we would sell. And if you looked at the visitor's guides, you'd look in a visitor's guide, and you know, does anyone have any idea how many restaurants we have in Morgantown? Several hundred. You would look in a visitor's guide, and there might be 20, and it'd be the 20 that were either willing or able to advertise, which is ridiculous. So it really wasn't a good representation of our region. So what we decided to do was, we stopped all of our advertising in our publications, and instead, we're embracing our Mountaineer Deals program. And essentially what this is, it is an extremely affordable opportunity for every business owner for a sum total of $240, as I said, it's affordable, for the entire year, to actually go ahead and advertise on our website in the form of a coupon that we promote out to our visitors and guests and get them to engage with our local businesses. So you don't have to be some business that can afford a $10,000, $20,000, $30,000, $40,000 ad with IMG or on a scoreboard or something like that. Instead, you can go ahead and you can purchase $240, it goes on our website, and then each month, I can tell you how many ads have been viewed, how many ads have been, you know, are actually out there being pushed out to our, the people that are engaging with our website. We have all this. There's nothing that we do now, nothing, nothing that we do that is not tied to some return on investment. So we were constantly evaluating and measuring how effectively we're using our resources and adjusting as so. So this has been very successful so far. My goal is to have somewhere around 1,000 businesses on our website. We are working towards that. I know we have over 7,000 businesses between Mon and Preston County, so I think 1,000 is a rather modest number. We're just going to get there. And then in addition to that, hold on a second here. Okay, our communication, we also recently, we have a newspaper article that goes in the newspaper, Dominion Post every other week. It's on Thursdays. And in addition to that, we now have a tourism partner newsletter. If any of you are not getting it, it's once a month, be happy, it's very short. It's called CVB Three Points. It's some events, some successes, and I mean, these are like short bullet points, some statistics that we share and track, and then a frequently asked question. That's it. It's one, two, three. If it's something you're interested in getting or you're not getting already, please let me know, be happy to put you on the list. And then we like to bring to everybody's attention municipal issues that may or may not come across your plates. I already said lodging tax, I already said the roads, and I said air service. We also come across taxes and licenses. When we're trying to attract events or work with people that are doing conferences, for example, in our area, different types of licenses or local taxes sometimes are a deterrent for us being able to attract conferences or events to our area. So it's just something to think about. If you ever want any more information, please let me know. I'd be happy to share with you our experience. Broadband service is another huge thing statewide for tourism. Without consistent broadband, and I know you can drive across town and there's dead spots all over the place, so it's everywhere in the state, but without consistent broadband, people don't, aren't real favorable towards traveling and being able to work while they're on the road and away from home. So that's another big thing. And then parking fees have also come up as an issue with some events. We've worked around it with the CVB and working with all our tourism partners, but they're the types of things that are municipal issues that seem to come back to us as it relates to the business that we do. We're planning for 2018. We're working on a concierge service. If you go to our site, we have some static itinerary, so depending upon your interests, you answer some questions, and we'll send you information only strictly based on what you say your interests are. We don't, we don't do spam, we don't do anything like that. We also don't share email addresses or information. But next year, we're trying to work on a customized, so if you told us you liked Italian food and you were interested in history and maybe some local art, we're trying to work on a customized itinerary for individuals, kind of like a concierge service on a person-by-person basis. So that's in the works. We're also evaluating a bicycle app. Apps are, there's pros and cons to them, but we're working with, because we have a lot of interest in, not just with the rail to trail, but with bicyclers in general. So that's something that's on our radar. We're also actively working with the Arts Collaborative, one of our tourism partners that we're trying, you know, arts is another big draw when it comes to tourism. So we're working with them and trying to embrace them with their calendar and their scheduling of events. We have the most highly utilized events calendar in the region, bar none. So if you go to tourmorgantown.com, our events calendar brings more people to our site than even our homepage, which is hard to believe, but that's really the way it goes. So we're trying to work the arts community into that same type of system. That would be very helpful. We've got a lot more going on. Like I said, I could talk for a long time, but I only had a few minutes. So with that, if anyone has any questions or would like to get in touch with me later on, I always welcome the opportunity to discuss tourism.
Great. Well, potentially there are questions for clarifications now or later. Any questions of our guest?
Well, I'm, if you're working on trying to put ordinances together and mesh ordinances, I would suggest that you work with our attorney because he's very good at it and one of our secrets to our success. So if you would do that while you're trying to mesh ordinances, I think you couldn't go wrong.
Thank you. I would be glad to.
If you want, if you want input on content for some reason, but I think that a really good starting place would be to work with our attorney.
Thank you. That'd be great.
I'd just like to thank you for your enthusiasm.
Yes.
You do present well, and you are a good representative for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. The, part of the reason I think that you present well is that you do a nice job of looking at, you have data. And so that's modern practice for modern cities, modern CVBs, is that you bother to collect data and get rid of things that aren't working and work toward things that are working. And I think it's really neat that you're working on your $240 Mountaineer Deals so that you get more broad-based participation, because it seems like with many entities, that it's either the people who can pay or the people who are on the ball and perhaps don't need the advertising as much versus people who have something really great to sell or show, but they don't, at the end of their workday, they don't have the wherewithal to come seek you out and, or the dollars. So that's nice.
We have a full-time person that actively, all they do is pursue and procure Mountaineer Deals. We didn't have that until just recently. So we couldn't keep up with it, and it's a lot of work, but it's working. It's going in the right direction, so.
And then I understand you're working a little bit with our airport, and
Yes.
I know that they're trying really hard to reboot, and so the more that you can do, the more we'll try to back you up on that.
Yes, and actually, Andrew participated, we have a, we have a weekly PR process. Weekly, we get together, we evaluate data, we look at what's coming up, we coordinate our messaging and whatnot, and we've opened it up to our tourism partners. They're not just municipalities, but there are other entities. We work with Main Street Morgantown, we work with the Chamber of Commerce, I mean, we work with a lot of groups. And Andrew was kind enough to attend recently. And, you know, we're, the more that we collectively message together, the more effective we have the opportunity to be, because any one of us are just kind of a smaller voice, whereas if we can all work on our messaging collectively, it really makes a huge difference, and the numbers show it. So, yeah, I really appreciate your all's support, and I'm, the door is always open. Please do not hesitate to reach out and contact me. I really welcome the chance, because this is all about relationships. Without relationships, we can't build tourism. So, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to our next presentation, Supplemental Parameters Resolution. Please welcome Tim Ball from MUB.
Evening, council. I'm Tim Ball, General Manager of Morgantown Utility Board. I'm accompanied tonight by John Stumpf, Bond Counsel for Steptoe Johnson. So if any of my comments prompt questions regarding legal technicalities, John can address that. I'm here to discuss two items, both related to supplemental resolutions. Both have, for different reasons, a degree of urgency, that both of these projects that I'm going to describe are time constrained, and so I'll give you some description of those circumstances as well. The first is the supplemental resolution for the 2017A Stormwater Bonds. This council has already recently approved two bond ordinances allowing MUB to issue bonds that would A, refinance $1.9 million of existing stormwater debt, and B, issue $1.5 million of new stormwater debt for new projects, so a total of $3.4 million. Our plan was to issue those bonds this spring, but pending changes in the federal tax code have prompted me to arrive tonight. There are changes in the tax code that may threaten the tax-exempt status of the proposed bonds, specifically the refinancing portion of the bonds. The current draft, just to, full disclosure, to be honest with you, the current draft of the, of the changes in the tax code do not remove the tax-exempt status of our refinance. But literally, the change of a single word in that pending legislation could negate our tax-exempt status, and we would rather be safe than sorry. So we've decided to bring this issue to council now so that we can hopefully get these bonds issued before the first of the year, before January 1, and avoid the possible impact that those changes in federal tax code may have. Our scheduling is also complicated to an additional degree by bank qualification of the bonds, and I won't go into the details of that, but the impact of bank qualification on our plans is that we may only issue $2.7 million of the $3.4 million total this year, and we'll need to wait and issue the balance, the other $700,000, next year. So our proposal immediately is to ask you to approve a supplemental parameters resolution that will allow us to issue $2.7 million worth of bonds this year. And then there will be a separate resolution, am I correct in that? A separate resolution for these, the balance, the remaining $700,000 to be issued in 2018. The supplemental parameters resolution is a routine formality. It provides details to you, to the record, the public record, that were not available at the time that the bond ordinance was approved. The second significant thing that the supplemental parameters resolution does is it delegates the council's authority to the mayor to execute the bonds and to approve any final details that are not available until the time of closing of the bonds. So that's our first item. And in order to accomplish the goal of issuing those bonds by December 31st, we request that council move the supplemental resolution for 2017A to its regular council agenda of December 5th next week. The second item I have is also a supplemental parameters resolution for the Rockley Road Water Project. Now this council, those of you new to council, may not be aware of that project. So very briefly, it's a water extension project in the Rockley Road portion of the Cheat Lake area. The project is being done essentially at the expense of the customers who will be served. Those customers have already persuaded state government to provide a funding package that originally was 50/50 grant and loan, with minor contributions locally. MUB's contributing in round numbers $26,000 in accordance with Public Service Commission rules, and the county commission has committed $50,000 towards the project. And then the state, through its Infrastructure Jobs Development Council, is funding the balance of the project in equal amounts of grant and loan. The loan is subsidized below market rates, 0% 40 years. The reason I go into the details of that is that those customers who will be served, it's 20 families along Rockley Road, will actually pay the debt service on that proposed loan themselves. They'll do it in the form of a surcharge that MUB will ask you to enact on that area of the water system, and that surcharge effectively collects the debt service that's due monthly on that 40-year loan from those customers, and MUB is simply a vehicle for those payments to be made to the state lending agencies. The time constraint that we're dealing with is that we're trying to get that water service installed and active by Memorial Day of this year. These homes are all currently served by wells. The wells are not dependable in terms of their water quality or the quantity that they provide, and of course, the demands on those wells increases dramatically once once the recreational season arrives at the lake, which is typically Memorial Day. So, we're trying to get this service installed by then. We won't have the documents ready for you until mid-December. We were working toward the schedule of bringing those to the December Committee of the Hole meeting. But it's my understanding now that due to the holiday conflicts, there won't be a Committee of the Hole meeting for December. So, that's why I, I bring this topic up to you tonight. For that project, in addition to the supplemental parameters resolution, we will need to bring you a rate ordinance and an authorizing ordinance. I'll emphasize right now, the rate ordinance will only be for the purpose of establishing the surcharge that applies to those 20 customers. The rates to the rest of the Morgantown Utility Board system will not be affected in any way. Let's get that bit. So, we need a supplemental parameters resolution, we need a rate ordinance, and we need an authorizing ordinance. The authorizing ordinance is required by Public Service Commission rules simply for you to approve any project that we do that is outside of the normal course of business. And the fact that we're creating the surcharge is the, the parameter that triggers that condition of being outside of the normal course of business. So, in order to get all of that done, working backwards from Memorial Day, we need to be under construction by the end of January. And in order to accomplish that, we ask this council to please consider those three items that I've just mentioned, supplemental parameters resolution, rate ordinance, authorizing ordinance, in its January meetings of January 2 and January 16. And in order to do that, we request that you either waive your requirement that those documents be submitted to the Committee of the Hole or, in the alternative, please consider this discussion as satisfying that requirement. That completes my remarks.
Are there questions?
I just have a question. It's, so it's 20 families and it's a 40-year debt payment on this. How are those, whether it's, whether it's the current residents or future residents, how are those property owners, how is payment enforced?
Through termination of service.
But they have service now. I mean, it...
No, they actually don't.
Well, they have well watered and subject presumably.
Yes.
Is there a possibility that they could just back out of the deal and continue to rely on their, and then we're left, we're left paying the, the debt?
Not really. The answer is this. They've, first, they've made a written commitment to us that they will pay for water service whether they take it or not. We will enforce that requirement against any subsequent owner of the property. And that, that's really why we established the surcharge through the rate ordinance so that it, it's not tied to the deed of the property. It's a condition of the water service that's provided to, to that location. The nice thing about it from, from this perspective of whether we're protected or not is that we've made the pledge to those customers and they've accepted that in the form of an acknowledgement in writing that this surcharge will be adjusted in either direction in the event that the count, the customer count changes more than 5%. So, if the customer count goes up more than 5%, the surcharge goes down proportionally. And to address your concern, if the customer count goes down by 5% or more, the surcharge goes up proportionally. So, we're guaranteed that, and the, the only way we really wouldn't be covered is if everybody decided to not take water service.
Which is not likely.
It's not likely. It's a risk we're willing to take.
Thank you.
Counsel Fanning.
How much is the overall debt?
In round numbers, the, the debt was originally going to be $600,000, again in, in round numbers. The bids came in low and we think that this is, and this is another reason that I need some time in December to work with the IJDC. Uh, the bids came in low and our proposal has been that the customers should enjoy the savings that are generated by those lower bids. If we, if our position prevails, the loan would be reduced from $600,000 to about $350,000.
And how, how far does the extension go that you're, you're installing there? From point, from the points of service...
I don't recall the exact length, but as you enter Rockley Road from Tyrone, from the lower end of Tyrone, it would be to the, the bottom of the downhill portion of the road. And then Rockley Road loops uphill back to a, a second portion of what is called Upper Rockley. Uh, that uphill portion would not be addressed. There aren't really any homes in there. The bulk of the properties and all the properties that are being served during that downhill portion from the first entrance to the bottom of the hill.
Okay, so roughly every family or every resident has, residence has about a $17,000 attachment?
Sounds about right. $350,000 divided by 20. Right. But they're, they're not directly liable for that debt. I mean, there, there's no lien on the property. That, again, that's why we established the surcharge through the rate ordinance. And so, any, any occupant of that property can only get water service by paying for the regular monthly bill plus the surcharge.
And what's the monthly surcharge going to look like?
Well, it's a function of the loan. Uh, right now, under the original budget, before the, the bids were received, that surcharge was going to be about $88 a month. I've not done the math to, to calculate it, but just estimating it in my head, I think that surcharge is now going to be in the $55 to $65 a month range. Now, again, there's a caveat to that. I have to persuade the IJDC to accept our proposal to allow the customers to enjoy the savings that are produced by the lower bids. So, let me expand on that. IJDC's normal position is, with any project that they fund in grant and loan proportions, their normal policy is that any savings produced by low bids is used to offset the grant and all of the savings. Their position is that all of the savings go to reduce the grant. And so, if that were the case, the loan would stay $600,000 and the grant would be reduced from $600,000 to $100,000. We've objected to that. We've suggested to the IJDC that an equal reduction in both loan and grant, preserving the 50/50 mix, is appropriate. The reason we didn't suggest that the savings go entirely to the loan is that the IJDC's grant loan mix is statutorily capped at 50/50. Their grant cannot exceed 50% of the total project budget. So, what we've asked for is the maximum that they could agree to in, in terms of maximizing the amount of the grant.
Okay, so just to, just to clarify, and I'm sorry to be so nitpicky about this, but the overall budget for the project is around $600,000. There, the grant proposed is somewhere in the realm of $250,000. And then there's a $50,000 county contribution. And so, the families themselves are funding $350,000 or $300,000.
That sounds right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counsel Wallace.
And to further summarize in layman's terms, is there any sort of subsidy from current rate payers in any form? Maybe not a rate increase, but any sort of capital improvements, long-term, anything?
Zero.
For this new addition?
Zero.
And MUB has the capacity to provide these services without any decrease in quality of services to current?
Correct.
And the reason we're being asked to act now is a bet against the future. That is, you mentioned the possible changes in federal tax code. And there's no way that it becomes a more favorable circumstance via the federal tax code. It can only get, it can only stay the same or get worse.
The federal tax code considerations apply only to the stormwater bond, not to the Rockley Road project. And in both cases, I, I think it's true to say that circumstances can only get worse if we do not act quickly.
And with the 20 families, what is the average, if, if you know, the average price of a, of the house? Or what kind of income group are we looking at here?
Varies widely among those 20, uh, literally from, I'm making up numbers, but it, this is my estimation. From some homes that might be worth $75,000 or $100,000 to others that are valued beyond a million. It varies dramatically.
For documents that you don't have now, but that you will develop in September, I mean, pardon me, December. Boy, um, I was wondering if, since those documents wouldn't have been available at a Committee of the Hole, if, as those are produced and that would be sort of subject to whether council or our manager would think about protocol. But if those could go whenever they're produced to, say, our attorney and our manager and, and even early copies to us, just so that if there are any concerns, we can make sure that, that we cover those so that we can keep things moving expeditiously.
That, that's an excellent idea. My goal is to have those documents ready to submit to my board on December 18th. We'll be happy to distribute them to you the, the, the next day.
I would just think if at least, yeah, if, if when they were ready, if they went to our manager and our attorney and then whenever they were ready, that it would go to us, just so that if there's, anyone has questions, we can review them at an early point.
We're happy to do so.
Regarding the Rockley Road project, has the county already given the $50,000 or is it committed to do that?
It's committed, but not delivered.
Committed as in enforceable contract, committed or, or promised?
No, just in the form of a formal motion by the commission approved by vote.
The written agreement from the families to continue with the, the debt service and everything, is that what we would call an enforceable contract?
It is.
Okay.
And those are all in hand and signed.
Great. And then, so back to the stormwater bonds, if you could summarize in layman's terms, the only reason why we need to hurry on this one is the proposed tax draft. There's no underlying change in finances or, or projections. It's just that...
That's correct.
Tax issue.
That's correct.
So, hurry is an interesting term because really, we're going through substantially all of the formalities. We're just doing it at a time prior to when you thought you were going to do it for specific reasons.
Right.
So, we're hurrying in that we know that there are deadlines and timelines that will make a big difference here, but that actually, we're just going through a, a pretty normal process.
It, it's exactly the, the plan that we've had all along, except for the fact that we've accelerated the execution of the plan for the timing that I've described.
But we're doing it all within all the legal parameters.
Absolutely.
That's what I want to make sure we're...
Dotting all the...
We're being expeditious and we're being frugal with people's money, but we're doing it as accelerated as legally possible.
And with all, uh, due attention to all details.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarification.
Just there, again, to just clarify, and the reason for doing this is that this will put our bonds in a more favorable market position?
We think actually with, yes, for two reasons. Uh, first, it will avoid the threat of the loss of the tax exemption, which we, we think is, is very important to pursue. And secondly, you know, most, i- if any of us knew where interest rates were going, we, we'd be rich. But most folks would expect interest rates to rise into the spring. And doing this allows us to take advantage of, of the lower rates that are presumed now as compared to what is expected in the spring.
Thank you.
Sorry, one other, one other question. You mentioned, I think I heard properly, that City Council would delegate its authority to the mayor?
Yes.
For transacting, what was it exactly?
For executing the documents necessary for the closing of the bonds and for approving any final details that remain to be determined at the time of closing.
And is that also a matter of course, something that we have planned to do, but we're just doing earlier than usual?
That's my understanding, yes.
Anything else? Well, thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate your thoroughness.
Thank you.
And our next presenter, on the quest tracker, will get a introduction from our city manager.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I want to formally introduce to you Andrew Stacy, who is our Communications Manager. And Andrew's been with us for about a month and a half and has worked in professional capacities in public relations for large, complex organizations. And so, fitting in quite nicely already. So, tasking, not only working on social media, internal sort of procedures, but also importantly, working with stakeholders, as Susan Riddle alluded to. And, and, you know, working with Main Street Morgantown. And, and, you know, we're really trying to extend our communication rea-, reach and by, you know, leveraging really resources with our, our community stakeholders. So, Andrew's going to guide us through and he's also going to be at the controls. I'm going to go through the strategic plan, but he's going to show you briefly the, the request tracker. Uh, so this is a change that's very seamless to our webpage. Uh, but the, the, the back office, if you will, it's a, it's a much more streamlined process. So, with that, Andrew Stacy. So...
Well, like Paul said, I'm, I'm happy to be here. I'll be talking about the, uh, the request tracker system. So, this is a new system that's replacing the old request partner system. Um, from what I understand of that, that was kind of an external website that people could submit concerns to. This is, uh, this request tracker system that we've gone to is incorporated into the website. Uh, so it's a lot more user-friendly and seamless. Um, we actually went live with the system last week. Uh, last Monday, we went live with it. And I've got a PowerPoint. I don't know if, if I can get that up there, but...
Does that need to be switched from back?
So, anyway, what, what is the request tracker? The request tracker is a, it's a reporting tool and tracking tool for citizens and government. Um, it allows the citizens and employees, city employees, to submit concerns or requests for any number of issues. Um, it also allows the city to keep track of and address citizen concerns. So, this is actually what the page looks like. It's kind of small there, but, um, on the website. So, how it works, when a citizen submits a concern, an email will get sent to a predetermined person in the applicable department, depending on what form they choose to fill out and what the issue is. The employee can then view the concern and post comments to the concern. They can also close out the ticket and take action on the ticket and things like that. So, when an employee posts a comment or the ticket is closed, an email is then also sent to the person that submitted the ticket notifying that, that there's been action taken on the, the request. Um, if it's not, if this concern is not addressed within a set time, which for us is three days, I believe, the concern's then forwarded up to the department chain of the command. And that's set, I think, I believe, within the department who, uh, that escalates to. The request tracker can also be used internally. For instance, uh, city employees can submit requests for IT support, building maintenance, things like that. The request tracker, it, it keeps a date and time history of the communication, such as when it's submitted, any comments, and when it was closed. Uh, so it also helps us keep track of, of all that. So, I'll walk you through how to submit a concern as a citizen or for city employees. Uh, they would go to the city website, which is morgantownwv.gov. Once on the homepage, there's two ways that they can get to the request tracker. Um, they can either scroll down the page and click on the "Report a Concern" under the Quick Links tab, which is right there on the homepage. Uh, they can also go and scroll over the "How Do I?" dropdown menu on the top of the homepage and go to "Report a Concern" there. Uh, both of these take you to the request tracker page. And then once on the page, you can find the appropriate category for the issue that you're, you're trying to, uh, report and select the form that best fits your concern. Uh, if you don't see one, we've actually created a form that's called "Can't Find My Form." If you don't see one, we've actually created a form that's called Can't Find My Form, that they can submit, and it's kind of like a catch-all for something that may not be on there. Most of the ones, well, actually, all the ones that are on there now, were either taken from the old site, or they're just commonly reported problems, so that's where those were generated. But we can create additional forms too, as needed, if we see new ones that need made. So once you click on the form and you sign, you're asked to sign in, from here, you can either create an account through the website, or you can sign in using your Facebook account. I'd just like to say that that doesn't allow the city or Civic Plus to post to your profile or have access to your profile, it's just for logging in and creating an account. Or you can proceed as a guest. For those that use, that think they will use the request tracker frequently, which I'm sure there will be, it's probably more beneficial and efficient to create an account. If they're just walking down the street and don't plan to use it all the time, and they see something they want to report, you can just sign in as a guest, and it'll still ask you for your name and email address, but it's a lot quicker and efficient, it just takes you straight to the form. That way, too, you're still getting a notification of, that there was some action taken on what you just submitted. Both of the, as I said, both of the options require a name and email address, but there are two, the arson and criminal hotlines, that they're anonymous forms, so they do not ask for a name or an email address, those can be submitted anonymously. So this is actually what it looks like, again, it's a little small, but this is what it looks like when you actually submit a ticket on the page. It gives you an ID number, who the ticket was assigned to, their email, their phone number, and just kind of gives you an overview of what you just submitted. And on the other end, this is, once the form is submitted, this is the email, and that's kind of small, but this is the email that's generated, that's sent to city employees. Literally, as soon as it's submitted, we get an email that gives us basically the same view of what the citizen sees, and we can click on view request up here and go straight to the ticket and start taking action on it. So, yeah, the users are notified as the ticket progresses from submission to completion. So, you know, if somebody posts, if a city employee posts a note to it, or a comment that they're looking at it, that notification goes straight to the citizen. Once it's closed, they also get a notification, preferably with what action was taken to close the ticket out. And then finally, one of the, some of the features of request tracker, one of the nice things that the old website didn't do, or the old request partner didn't do, was keep stats, detailed stats on departments and problems and individuals, which lets us see, you know, how many problems were submitted, how many are still open, and the average time it takes to close a request. So that is definitely an improvement from the old system.
Any questions? You're invited to.
Just quickly, in terms of, after it's submitted, the communication is via email back to the requesting person?
Correct.
From the person that it was routed to, from the employee that it was routed to?
I believe, that's a good question. I believe it's routed through Civic Plus, I'm not sure the exact, I'm not sure if the email that shows up, if it's the city email address, or if it's, I'm not sure, that's a good, I can find out, get back to you.
Is it an automatic response?
Anytime something's submitted on the city.
There's an acknowledgement.
Right, yeah.
And the acknowledgement would be an automatic response?
Correct.
However, the follow-on, what is the follow-on?
Well, the follow-on, we have the ability, or any city employee, whoever's taking action on the ticket, can go in and add comments to the ticket, and that, as soon as they submit that comment on our, on the backend, it sends an automatic email out to whoever submitted the ticket.
To the request.
There's a note on there, so that they can then go on and see what has been posted.
They have to sign on to see what's posted, or it's sent to their email?
It's sent to their email.
Okay.
Council Wallace.
I might have missed this, you said that the unanswered tickets are escalated to the department head. Does that happen automatically, or does someone need to go in there and manually escalate the ticket?
No, it's, from my understanding, it's automatic. You can set the time, and for us, I believe, we've set it at three days, as the, before it escalates up to the next level.
And how confident are we in terms of this being spam, or phishing, or cyber attack proof?
That, I would say fairly confident. I've talked with our IT manager, and he's not reported any issues as far as that goes. Like I said, one nice thing is that it's incorporated into the website, so it's not an external site that you're going to, which, I know definitely helps along those lines.
I will be anxious to hear the results of this particular experiment. We've had this in the past, where we've attempted to be much more responsive to these things, and I'm glad to see that we're moving forward on it. Thank you very much.
Well, particularly since we have the data that we can, you know, show aggregate information, what type of complaints that are coming in, and perhaps that could be reviewed during budget times and alike, and so, I think it'll just be a very effective tool, that'll help us to better manage, you know, the contacts that are made, and, you know, what the response time is, and if there's any sort of lag, how we can do, you know, internal improvements, so.
The one other, I'm sorry, the one other request I would make is that we publicize this more vigorously, and we put it out in the paper, and perhaps in our own, I know we have a newsletter that goes out, is it weekly, or monthly?
Monthly.
Monthly.
We're going to start that back up in January.
Very good, and I'd very much like to see, and perhaps we could introduce this to the neighborhood associations also.
Neighborhood coordinated council.
Yes, and more effectively encourage the use, to see whether or not this is an appropriate way to attack this problem.
Right, and we did bring that up at the November meeting earlier, so it was just, and again, process-wise, for the user, it looks just the same, it's, you know, you go to the same spot on the webpage, and it's, what Andrew showed is that, once you get into the particulars, then there's, where there's a little bit of a subtle difference of where you categorizing what type of complaint that is, so.
I'm sorry to interject, but just for the sake of our densely packed constituents here, could we turn the heat down a little bit? I think that would be.
I'll give it a shot, I'm not sure.
Helpful to the audience.
Good to me. Meanwhile, are there any other questions for Andrew? Council Celine.
So with regard to anonymous, if somebody, we have had situations where people badly wanted to be anonymous, because they were worried about the repercussions, for whatever reason, of submitting something. But if someone submits anonymously, there's not a good way to get back to them, is there? Or do they just send it back to the email, which could be?
Yeah.
It's a funny, how does it work?
I mean, the best way that I would know, that, which I think I didn't mention in the presentation, but there is a third option that you can do to submit a concern, and that's probably the best way to be anonymous, and that is to call the city and report your concern, and then the employee can then input the, fill out the form and submit the ticket internally. Again, I don't know how, you know, if you want to be anonymous, you're not going to be contacted and told what the outcome is.
Yeah, I've tried to discourage people from anonymous, just because you don't, you don't get the service back that you might want.
Sure.
Anyway, it's interesting to try to figure out how you do that, so that you get legitimate complaints, and then you get solutions, and the person knows about them.
Right.
Thanks.
Anything else? Well, thank you very much. And moving on to the fourth presentation, which is the strategic planning implementation, and here we go.
Okay, yep, all right, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Andrew's going to help me at the controls, but I'm going to go through very quickly, you all are familiar with the report, but just as a summary, and to give an overview to our viewing audience and those participating here. So the first slide is the overview, you know, of course, we went through the strategic planning process late in September, our consultants compiled a report shortly thereafter, and this is talking about the actual implementation. So our strategic goals that we came up with through this process, we, meaning the council, that you've identified nine main goals, and out of that are seventeen individual objectives to implement that. So going through each of them, the very first one is attractive amenities, and a few things to kind of highlight. So there's been this group, and Councilor Celine, Mayor Kueke, have been involved in the Mon River Task Force, so have been looking at riverfront redevelopment, also talks about parks and arts and cultural opportunities. So that's what's involved in the strategic plan pertaining to attractive amenities. Going next to cooperative relationships, the obvious ones that come to mind is WVU and Mon County, and the other cities in the county. But another cooperative relationship, which is really key, is working closely with the Department of Highway. So as we have many state roads that are within the city boundaries, and, you know, as I mentioned before, if this successful bond passage, there are some projects that'll be conducted in the city, and so I guess I would kind of draw attention, there's a key critical stakeholder that we need to have very good relations. Next is excellent city services, and, you know, kind of focuses on two main areas. One, talking about public safety, and whether it be, we spoke about the fire service and police department as well, and code enforcement. But then, as we look at internally within the organization, building the capacity of our workforce, and find best practices and best ways to use prudently the public dollar. So it's a nice segue into fiscal stability. So looking at the possibility of a tax structure overhaul, part of that would entail looking at our fees, does the fees truly cover our total cost of providing a service? So part of that effort is sustainability, as we've talked about the, you know, climate activities, and making sure that we're, have energy-efficient buildings and alike, and so, you know, that's where we'll be concentrating even greater efforts in that regard. So switching over to transportation, and looking at things from a much broader perspective, what this entails is multimodal, and very specifically revisiting complete streets. So complete streets, several councils ago passed a resolution, there's not an actual ordinance, and so we'll get into what that means in that regard, as we look at changes to street systems and alike. And then, at the same time, looking at non-motorized transportation, so greater attention to sidewalks, increasingly, that issue has come up, and the municipal service fee does include improvements to sidewalks, so. So more on that. So on transportation, looking at, from a broader perspective of quality development, a big component of that is to look at Morgantown Airport, which includes the runway extension, and later on, the Commerce Park expansion, which is an integral part of that, so. Next, the, really getting to the heart of the community, which is a vibrant downtown. And so maintaining our good relationship with Morgantown Main Street, and, which entails really concentrating on physical appearance, and overall economic development opportunities that are in the downtown area. And the downtown not only includes the obvious high street central business district, but also the WARC district, which is an integral part of downtown as well. So as we look inward, we look outward, annexation has been discussed as part of this process, that we look at border expansion, of course, the potential through legislative changes that would enable us to do that in a very thoughtful, deliberate way, but yet allows public input. So there are certainly ways that we can achieve that, and those efforts are currently underway right now, so. Attainable housing, that was an issue that was raised, and Councilor Delaney is kind of championed that, caused by drawing attention that there, depending on the income in individuals, housing is not attainable in the community. So quality housing and having the choices, and it also impacts us from a broader economic development perspective, as we bring in businesses and site selectors looking at expanding into Morgantown. So that, that is a very quick nutshell of, but, so what you have before you, the Renaissance roadmap that is included in there, and the individual action plans, whether it's some sort of measurable, whether it's a partnership, whether it's a facility, a new program, and so, trying to evenly distribute that, this is, we're looking at a pretty ambitious upcoming year, with a record number of initiatives starting. So at the same time, I think of having openness and transparency, of having a reporting system that periodically, where we kind of, we check in on things, and to say, how are we doing? Because if it's not a legislative issue, which you have to pass an ordinance, you know, a lot of this would be behind the scenes. And so, of course, I think it's important that we celebrate our successes, and that we evaluate our opportunities in ways that we can do things better. And so that is the plan that I'm submitting to you for your consideration, and talk further under the action item, to present that at the December fifth meeting, and, you know, if there's any changes or edits, but I do want to thank, staff has worked tirelessly on this, Assistant City Manager Angela Klein has really spearheaded that, worked closely with the department directors. Andrew Stacy has been instrumental of making this in a much more readable format, and helping us with the verbiage and the like, so this is truly a team effort, and very pleased and proud to head up that effort. But I think this is a good statement of looking into the future, of what are the important objectives that we've set forward, this kind of this work plan for the next two years and beyond. And I think this is a very ambitious plan, but I think it's doable, but yet, you know, it's something that, when we talk about working as a team, we have to work with our many community partners in order to further this, so it's not something that the city can do just alone, so look forward to your thoughts and ideas, and, you know, this is, this is a living document, so if there's verbiage that's not clear, or we need to change that, or, you know, revisit that, by all means, but I think we have a pretty good product, and very proud of this, and I look forward to your input and dialogue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions of our city manager?
Just quickly, first of all, I want to thank you for this. It's very encouraging, very ambitious, and also very courageous in identifying all these particular action steps. I think it gives us a very forward-looking program that can truly be measured, and we'll be held accountable for, so, but thank you. I appreciate you and all those who have participated in bringing this to us. Very encouraging.
Thank you. Our community has been asking us to cast a wide net, and this is a wide net, and let's pull in some great fish, or whatever the extension of that metaphor might be.
Yeah, just, I want to.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you as well, and also just want to clarify that what wasn't on the slide presentation, but we have in front of us, are, it includes not only the objectives, but also the action steps, timeframe for at least starting, and then evaluation measures. And I think that's really important. Those are important components of any strategic plan, and so I just want the public to know that we didn't just leave it at the objectives, that we're also trying to work through measurable actions and goals as well.
Correct.
The one other thing I would like to just mention, I know in your effort to be succinct, I think you missed one thing that I think is worth pointing out. Under quality development, of course, the airport is very important, but also the strategic community development, which includes continuing to integrate aspects of the comprehensive plan into what we do as a city. And I think that's very important and worth just drawing out.
Isn't that the first item?
It is, yes. I'm just, it was not mentioned during the slide presentation.
Oh, you mean verbally. It's in here, but people couldn't hear it.
Yes. Correct.
Right. I spent more time on the airport than I did. That's a good catch.
You got it.
Yes. I knew it was there, so I was going, wait a minute.
Are there other questions of our city manager? Councilor Celine?
So where do we go from here? How do we, because some things are staff, collaboration, partnership, but some things might be other kinds of partnerships that might include council people and staff and partners. So how do we help make sure that this is what's going on besides attending our meetings and attending the other meetings that we go to? How can we make sure we keep this moving?
Well, first and foremost, that you're moving that forward, I'm recommending that you place that on the agenda for the December 5 meeting. And it's not saying that there's not a sense of urgency, but I think we've talked about this long enough.
Moving on.
We certainly know the issues. So in the implementation phase, it's not a single person, it's, you know, it really takes a village and collaboration, and probably this will involve some task force. In fact, there are some things that are organically already occurring right now. And so potentially, there may be certain things, I know individually, when I look at many of you, you've been a champion for that. So that's something that there's opportunities for you to be involved and take a lead. So there's a way.
Yeah, task forces was, that was the type of thing I was thinking.
Yeah, I think the implementation of that, if it's, assuming that it's not a, if it's a very specific change to a city's service, I would say that would be self-contained.
And that would be more staff and.
Correct. But when you look at a more holistic sort of perspective in that regard, and particularly when you're bringing in other stakeholders, then we need that wide collection. It brings greater input and ideas. But at the same time, I think what I will emphasize is that here, we're setting deadlines, and it's real easy, how do I say this play, like, not having meetings for the sake of having meetings, but you know.
Well, some of them are already.
Actionable items.
Yes.
That we can show progress within a certain amount of time. Now, with that being said, this is not to convey that all problems will be solved within the next year and a half, that as much as we would like to do that.
We want them all solved in the next year and a half.
That's right. Just wave that magic wand, right, and then they're all solved. No. But at least showing a good start in what the progress is, and periodically coming back and checking in. And it may be a report, it may be a presentation at a committee of the whole, and to talk about, you know, what are the opportunities, what are the threats, you know, what are we doing well in that regard? So I think there's always this kind of tune-up and check-in, and to see how we're doing. And most importantly, as we accomplish things, we need to celebrate. And so whether it's small or large accomplishments, that we bring that back and to say that, look, we were able to accomplish that. But some of these issues, it may not be, you know, where you check the box and call it good, it may be ongoing. But where there are milestone type of events, whether it be, for instance, applying for a grant. Now, that would be an instance, if we're successful in gaining a grant, that's the time to celebrate, to say that, yes, we have been able to obtain the money to implement or build this new structure, or whatever it happens to be. And I think that's something I'll be working very closely with Andrew, and you know, and really get that information out through our communication channels. At the same time, I want to develop some sort of a dashboard, so kind of a quick overview that you can go through these objectives, and you know, someone can look at, you know, kind of bullet points. How are you doing? What's the next steps? And so that way, it keeps everyone informed in that regard, and holds us accountable. So if we can translate that into some measurable, if we can decrease the amount of time, if we can spend less money, if we can translate that into some numerical value, that we can incorporate that as part of a report, that's showing definite signs of progress in that regard. So this kind of, it takes on many different dynamic sort of elements in that regard, you know, the very, very broad sort of sweeping sort of changes to the, you know, programmatic changes within a department of where we're able to improve our services, or increase the speed that we provide, or whatever that happens to be. But this is the framework, and we can align that to a timeline and measure our progress and go from there. Then after a certain period of time, we can start all this all over again, and you know, look at another set of objectives, and perhaps some of these will carry over the next time that is done, whenever that is determined, when it's appropriate. So.
Right.
But again, I'm pleased, I'm thanking for the feedback, and you know, I was looking for a format that was something that would, you know, that it's a very usable document that we keep on our desktop, and it's not just something we stick on the shelf and say, you know, move on from there. Because oftentimes, I can tell you, that's what ends up happening with strategic plans. You know, we get caught up in the here and now, and this is the broad vision, and so that we're all committed to, and so this is a way of articulating that to the broader community, so.
Absolutely. And it's our commitment to the community.
Correct.
And speaking of grant writers, we do have a grant writer now.
We do, yes.
For grants. Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So that concludes the presentation portion of our meeting, which brings us to the public session. And individual citizens are encouraged to speak or present from the podium with the microphone within a four-minute timeframe, and it looks like potentially we have some interest in speaking at the podium, so we will be strict with that, four minutes. If you do speak, please be sure to either write your name down, but certainly to articulate it, regardless of whether you've written it down, your name and your address. So declaring the public session open, do we have anyone wanting to speak at the public session? Okay.
I'm Heather Gentile, 2098 Oak Street. I appreciate the opportunity to allow us to come forth. And the reason I'm here tonight is to address some concerns I have over an item on the agenda, which was the downtown bars closing early. I believe and I understand that this came to council's attention from an individual who I believe was concerned over the closing times, which are set by state law, of the bars downtown, and an influx of others coming in from surrounding areas, such as, you know, outside of Morgantown, that is. I believe probably that maybe was a safety concern, but I'm not sure exactly what it is. Obviously, there's several people here, and bar owners. My husband's a bar owner, owns the back door and bar and tavern downtown on High Street, and he has been an owner of that business for over 25 years. And the biggest concern, which is the obvious one, which would be financial on behalf of the businesses. It's been a long time since I've been out of school. I'm sure some of you as well. The social aspects of the college students, which primarily are the clientele for the downtown bars, are a little different. They generally, and most times, don't come out till very late. So the effect of closing the bars down, or potentially trying to close the bars down at an earlier time, will definitely be a financial disadvantage to the bar owners downtown. My other concern is the way that it's addressed on the agenda, it says downtown bars. Not sure exactly what that means. I mean, are you talking about the entire city limits, all the seven districts? Are you talking about only private clubs? As some of you may or may not be aware, there's a difference in the licenses that are acquired in order to sell alcohol. So private club license is those that are, you know, obviously sell alcohol, or liquor as well as beer and wine. But you also have those that sell just, you know, beer and wine. So when you're saying that, I guess my question is, you know, what's the proposal? Is that private clubs? Is it bar and license? Are you limited it? Are you attempting to limit it to just the High Street area or the downtown area? Are we going into the Wharf District? And so as I mentioned earlier, obviously, it's the financial disadvantage to the bar owners. But it will be a, you know, snowball effect from there, if you think about it. I'm sure nobody's really thought about maybe the hotel, the Marriott. It has private club license in the restaurant down there. Are we going to attempt to close them down at midnight? What about New Year's Eve? I mean, it's just kind of a snowball effect from there. We've got other businesses, we've got your, the Motown Taxi, the Yellow Cab Service, we've got your convenience stores that sell beer and wine, you know, we've got, you know, a couple downtown. So I guess my primary concern, obviously, is the elephant in the room, is the financial disadvantage that it would cause, for sure, on behalf of the owners of these establishments downtown. The other thing would be, I guess, is to address what I believe may be the concern, which is safety. My thought would be, you've got these licensed establishments that are regulated by state authorities, they have rules and regulations, you know, they card people at the door, they're structured, they're regulated, as opposed to, you know, closing down the bars at midnight, and the kids flood out into their homes and have their house parties that are not regulated. It puts additional pressure on and services to the fire service, fire marshal, the city police, other services that are provided, you know, by the city themselves. So I guess my time's up. And I would just like for anyone else that's here to please come to the podium and address the concerns that you may have, or questions that you may have for council.
Sure. Great. Thank you very much for your input.
Good evening, councilman, councilwoman. My name is Michael Carty. I'm an attorney at Bowles Rice. I am here to convey the interest.
Could you give us your address?
Yes. The business, Bowles Rice, or my personal?
Your personal address.
110 Claremont Court, Morgantown, West Virginia, 26501.
Thank you.
I am here to convey the interests of the Morgantown Retailers Association. This is an organization of restaurants, bars, and real estate owners in downtown Morgantown, West Virginia. I believe many representatives and friends of the organization are here today. Please stand up. These individuals are here to express their vehement opposition to any ordinance that would require these bars to close earlier, quite simply. It's my understanding that the motivation is public safety. I think too often, we're motivated to do things based on fear without facts, and at this point, I've seen nothing to connect the bar closing time with public safety, with violent crimes, with drug-related crimes, with alcohol-related crimes. I've heard that Morgantown is a dangerous place at night, yet recent statistics say that it's safer than Marion County. Statistics say that violent crimes are on the decline, alcohol-related crimes are on the decline, drug-related crimes are on the decline. We're one of the safest large campuses in the country. I have heard that people are, violent people are coming across state lines and committing crimes. They may be coming across state lines, but the question is, why are they here? Are they here for the late bar hours? Or are they here because we have a great city? It's a vibrant college town where they want to come. Or as local police authorities have stated, are they here because Morgantown is unfortunately a centralized location to Detroit, to Pittsburgh, to Philadelphia, and it's a place where they meet up for drug transactions? If that is true, if the local police authorities are correct, then the bar closing time has nothing to do with those violent criminals. I've also heard that it will promote safety along the lines of binge drinking, violent crimes at night, but I think the local safety authorities will say, we would rather these students drink, if they're going to drink, at bars, where there is, it is regulated, people are protected, where there are personnel to call an ambulance if someone is sick, to stop a fight if a fight is occurring. I think that is the case. And so there are a lot of questions we have regarding the connection between the bar closing time and the safety of Morgantown citizens. What there is no question about is the damaging effect that it would have on restaurants, bars, real estate, in downtown Morgantown, if it's confined to that area, or broader Morgantown. There's no question. One member of the organization had a chance to review his books prior to this evening, and he said, if the closing time is pushed up by one hour, his profits will decrease by 20%. If the closing time is pushed up by two hours, the profits will decrease by 50%. And I don't buy an argument that, that, well, the students will just go out earlier. You know, I'm from Morgantown, I graduated from WVU, I don't think I'm too far removed from college, do not have any idea what colleges are like these days. College students are night owls. They work late, they study late, and if they're going to party, they do, they party late. And so if they're not drinking at the bars, they're going to drink at home, where there are less protections in place. And so I think the business, the damaging business aspect is a definite reality. Hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxable income will be lost, if not more, broadly speaking, among all the businesses, the restaurants, the bars, et cetera. And for that reason, it's a very important issue to the Morgantown Retailers Association, and they have asked me to come here. They have asked me to fight against any ordinance changing the closing time, whether it's during the drafting process, whether it's during the home rule application, or the court system. I'm not sure that, and I don't know, this is early in the process, I'm not sure that the city has the authority to drastically change the bar closing time. I think the WVABCA would agree with me, but if it goes forward, we'll see. But thank you for your time, everybody.
Great. Thank you for your input.
I'm Penny Cosca, 895 Fairfax Drive. This has nothing to do with the bars. My thought is, and the organization, I'm with the Evansdale Neighborhood Association, and we have begun to establish some interplay with the Towers complex and with the Serenity House, which is the recovery program for the university, because they are our neighbors. And as the strategic plan, which I think is really exciting, is being implemented, it is, we have been talking about the possibility of re-establishing a town gown entity to work in hand and glove with the university as we move forward into the future. That would be specifically for the Morgantown area and the WVU campus, so that we have a. be specifically for the Morgantown area and the WVU campus, so that we have regular meetings that are not stepping on each other's toes in the future, or ignoring each other's needs as that proceeds. And I just simply wanted to bring that up in the committee of the whole, so that it may possibly go on to the agenda in the future months before the spring. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope cars are open. (laughter)
Hi, my name is Christine Wallace, 7 Warwick Street, Morgantown, West Virginia, 26505. I just wanted to talk about two things really briefly. We have Snowflake 2K that's coming up in Wiles Hill, and it's to raise funds for our playground structure that was recently taken down because it wasn't to code, so everyone's invited to that, the whole community is. It's only $5, and it's only 2K, which is 1.25 miles, so very short event. There's also a ceramics and art sale happening from December 9th, so the beginning of the, so the 2K through December 15th, that's at Wiles Hill as well, and it ends on the 15th, which is the Candy Cane Hunt at Wiles Hill, and that's open for the community as well. And then, we also have indoor cycling that started two weeks ago, and so these two things, the Snowflake 2K and the indoor cycling, 100% of those proceeds are going towards the playground fund for Wiles Hill. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak tonight on any issue? Going once, twice? Declare the public session therefore closed? Thank you all for being here, appreciate your coming out tonight. Moving on then. We'll take a two-minute, a 2K break here, a 1.2 mile break.